We'd like to call the City Council meeting to order tonight. We'll have just a roll call and indicate that Mayor Bigelow is out of town. And I'm Steve Vincent, serve as the Mayor Pro Tem, so we'll be conducting the meeting tonight. Also, Councilman Christensen and Councilman Bueller are absent tonight. We will turn the time over now to Councilmember Karen Lang for our opening ceremony.
Would you please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the Father, and to the Son, and to the Holy Spirit, and to the Lord God, the Father, and to this world with liberty and justice for all.
It's nice to have a pool house when we do the Pledge of Allegiance. Special recognition, we usually recognize our scout troops that are here, but right now I don't see any that are out there. We have approval of the minutes of July 5th.
Okay, if I may move for approval of the July 5th minutes?
We have a motion, we have a second. Any discussion to those minutes? Seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, we have, next on the agenda is awards and ceremonies, and we have special awards tonight. It's called our Essential Peace Award, which we present to, we don't do it very often, but we, when we have something, community member that's done something extraordinary or wonderful, we would like to take an opportunity to recognize them and the contributions they've made to the city. And I'll turn the time over to Councilman Nordfeld for this presentation.
Thank you. And this is an award for Officer Bob Hayward. It was, he was nominated by Sherry Beesinger. And if it's all right, I'd add a little personal note that Trooper Bob Hayward was a great trainer and supervisor and friend to my father. And it's my privilege to be able to read this and recognize him tonight. Ms. Beesinger writes, "Granger Girls, you were being stalked August 15th and 16th, 1975, but thanks to our neighbor, friend, and Highway Patrol Officer Bob Hayward, who lived in the Granger area for over 35 years, you didn't become Ted Bundy's 26th victim. In the wee hours of August 16th, 1975, Bob chased Ted Bundy through the Hillsdale subdivision at high rates of speed. Ted Bundy finally pulled over at the service station located on the southeast corner of 3500 South, 2700 West. Ted had an excuse for running from him, but Bob felt uneasy. He felt he needed to search the VW bug and found many suspicious instruments that could have been used for burglary. Without any solid reason to arrest Ted Bundy, he took him to the solid courthouse and had him booked, fingerprinted, and jailed overnight. Officer Bob Hayward asked the jailers to double fingerprint Ted so that no mistakes or fingerprint smears could occur. Ted was soon released, but because of Bob Hayward's intuition, Ted Bundy was soon linked to murders throughout the country. Bob Hayward saved possibly hundreds of lives by being the first officer to arrest Ted Bundy, sorry. His actions made it possible for other states to link murders to him and further stop deaths of young girls in the 1970s. Thank you for your service, Officer Bob Hayward, a real hero." Do you want to step forward in here? So let's, I'll get one with you two, then I'll get one with that.
Okay.
All right. Do you want to say anything?
Well, I appreciate the acknowledgement of the stop that I did make on Bundy. It was quite a roar when we booked him. My brother was Pete Hayward, the sheriff. So I called Pete the next morning, and I said, "I put a guy in your jail last night. He had his front seat hanging in the backseat. He's loaded with burglary tools. He's got to have a problem, but I don't know what it is." And he said, "We'll run a check on him." So they called Washington, and they was hiring an airplane to come and get him. They wanted him bad for several known murders in Washington. And it started there, ended up with over hundreds that they had transferred throughout the area up there. And it was a start. And we testified, me and Jerry Thompson, in Colorado where they had missing girls there, he killed a young lady in a snowstorm. And he went to different states than that when he got to Texas, and then he got into another one there. But anyway, he had slaughtered people completely through somewhere 250 miles. That's all he'd done. And we tied it down to something like that. But I do appreciate the recognition. It was nothing gallant, but it was a lucky stop, and I'm sincerely grateful for this offer and to remind me of my future, which is close.[431.24][431.24](Applause)
Bob, if you'll, if you'll stand here for one more picture.
All paparazzi, you're done? I think Sherry Beesinger would like to make a few comments.
On behalf of the girls that were growing up in Granger, Utah in 1975, I would like to thank you, Bob Hayward, for saving so many lives. Many girls have written on our Growing Up in Granger, Utah Facebook page memories about their experience on August of 1975 with a man in a Volkswagen. He was following them home from work. He was following them home from church activities. He was following them as they walked to friends' houses. He was asking them if they wanted a ride. But none of these precious girls in our community knew that 40 years ago, it was Ted Bundy. He was the one driving right in front of their homes, schools, and following them, stalking them, and planning on something very devious. Ted Bundy had already killed 25 girls by the time he began to stalk our precious Granger, Utah girls. Yet he had never been arrested and never even questioned. Bob, because of you, you were so dedicated and you cared so much about our community because you knew the neighborhood inside and out, because you watched over our area, you knew who belonged there and who didn't. You were the one. You were the one to see his out-of-place Volkswagen in our community in the wears of the morning. You were the one to follow him on that chase. You were the first to ever arrest him, even though he told you a very believable lie about the reason that he was in our community. It all boils down to the fact that you cared about our community. You knew our neighborhoods. You knew our vehicles. You knew what movies were at our community drive-ins because you were dedicated to us. I thank you for loving our community and caring so much about others. I thank you for sitting in your car countless hours after work, for watching out for unusual behavior in our area, for watching out for cars that didn't belong in the neighborhood. I thank you for getting double fingerprints on Ted Bundy so that he couldn't smear them and thwart the arrest. I thank you for knowing our community in ways that when this evil man told you a very believable story, you knew he was lying. Bob, you are an essential person. You are an essential piece in stopping this madman. You saved so many lives because you cared and you were aware of our community. On behalf of the girls of Granger, Utah in 1975, I thank you.[644.38][644.38](Applause)
In a time where police officers are being looked down on, this is surely a wonderful thing to see tonight, and we thank you. And we thank all of our police officers for the hard work that they do. We'll move on to the next portion of our agenda, and if you want to stay, you're welcome to it, but if you'd like to move on and go do family things, you can do that as well. In fact, we'll give you a few minutes to...
Hi. Good to see you. Good to see you too. How you doing? Good. Thank you.
I was going to say, I can't read. What's behind the back? Yeah, get it out. Get in here. I didn't see you come here.
This is a time when residents of the city, if they have some concerns that they need to bring to the council, they can do it at this time. This is not a time to talk about the public carrying items that are on the agenda, but these are, would be separate items. Nobody has brought me a sign-up sheet indicating that anybody's signed up, but we will ask if there's anybody here that would like to address the council on something that's not on the agenda tonight. Now would be the appropriate time to do that. We'd give you five minutes to do that. Okay, seeing that nobody is here for that purpose, we'll move on to, if the city manager says, has any comments? Any of the council members?
I have one. Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem. Two weeks ago, we had the, we call it the Wall of that Hill. It was here from June 30th to July 5th, and we had a great ceremony there. Also, we grateful to have that wall here because a lot of people, they didn't have a chance to go to Washington DC to look at that wall. So that time was an opportunity for them to, you know, look and basically remember what the history we carry in the past. Also, I say that with other people. I know it's very, you know, it's a jetty, it's a tough war in Vietnam. We had about 361 Soviets here in Utah. We passed away. And I can relate to that because my family is one of them, is my dad, and he was in special forces. And he died in a battle to, missing an action. I remember that. I didn't know much about, I was five years old, but the, basically the world turned upside down when my mom, she received that news. It's a moment to sit there and to think about the whole ordeal in my family and also 361 Soviets, they had go through those. It's sad, but also I'm grateful to be there and to know that those people, they loved the country so much, they sacrificed, you know, their ultimate sacrifice for the country, the life of the country. And I'm grateful to sit here and to serve the community. And not long ago, about a week ago, and we had another jetty in Dallas, Texas. You know, five police officer, unfortunately, unfortunately, is killed by the gunman. And I was the cable news, cable news network, and they interviewed the ladies with the four boys, and she shared a story with us, and she says she tried to, she'll cover her voice. And then she saw police very much tried to assist her and tried to cover her too. And she saw that two or three police officer in front of her, shrub on the floor or on the street. And when we look at, or we hear that story, she just share with us, and we consider, you know, people, they love the country so much, they love the community so much, and they protect those people, to like that lady. And tonight, the event, I bought hard work tonight. He care about the community, and he pulled up Ted Bundy, stopped Ted Bundy and asked him questions, and then brought him in jail. And I thought it was wonderful why these people, they have done this because they love their country, they love the community, they love their people. And I'm grateful to be here, and I hopefully I can be a part of that and try to do my best, try to serve the community. That's all I have for tonight.
Thank you. We have two public hearings tonight. First public hearing is in regards to zone tech change and the creation of a new light industrial zone. And I'll turn the time over to Mr. Pyle for the description of that.
Thank you, sir. So as you mentioned, we'd be creating a new zone, the light industrial zone, which would be a derivation of. The next item on the agenda is for consideration of moving some properties within the city's limits that are currently zone manufacturing to light industrial zone. And basically, the purpose of this is, as we said, just for further ability of what kind of uses would be in those properties.
Okay, does anybody have any, well, before we do that, let's go ahead and open the public hearing for application number ZT-72016. Is there anybody here that would like to speak to this application? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing and bring this back to the council for discussion. Discussion or a motion?
Mr. Mayor Pro Tem, I move that the approved ordinance number 16-31.
We have a motion, do we have a second to that motion?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion to the motion? We'll bring it to a vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Oh, that's right, we're doing roll calls. I'm sorry.
Councilman Lang? Yes. Councilman Hune?
Aye.
Councilman Nordfeld?
Yes.
And Mayor Pro Tem Vincent?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
Now we have the second part of this, and that's the actual creation of some areas in the city. And Mr. Pyle, before we have the public hearing, I think it's always helpful for those that are here to actually see the maps, so I, if we can pull those maps up and show them to the public.
Absolutely, sir. So just bringing down those screens, and we'll be showing those maps, and I'll give a quick description of what is happening. Now that the light industrial zone has been authorized and approved, we are actually bringing an application to change some zone in a particular area of the city. And the area is size of approximately 72 acres, and it's locally located between 24th South and 25th South on the west side and 5600 West. This is an area which traditionally has been known to have a number of salvage yards there for this use. So anyway, there have been a number of proposals that have been discussed over the years of improvements, which should change, certainly with not, or coming through, that's a factor that nature of the neighborhood area there. We as a city have also participated in the past in doing things such as infrastructure improvements, that sort of thing. Just recently completed a special improvement district, and I think we actually have, property owners have made the final payment on that in just the real recent past. And so again, as we're looking at the use of that or the future of that and other areas in the city, it became, actually, we would start considering what are the different uses and the kinds of manufactured uses. Previously, under the general manufacturing, so there were heavy manufacturing uses, the light industrial designation, as we would be applying, it seemed to be appropriate and directed towards the future development in the city. And so with that, I promise, that was my way of, you know, delay that conversation as long as I could while the map was coming up. So the map that is before you there on the screen does show the area that we're discussing outlined in red and roughly corresponds to those boundaries I was talking about.
Thank you. We'll go ahead and open the public hearing on this application, Z6-2016. Is there anybody here that would like to speak to this application? Please state your name and address for the records.
Bill Mulholland Enterprises, 2314 South, 5600 West. Our business there in particular is code fabrication. And we're not objecting anything to do with improving the area or trying to prevent change. Probably the only, the only question we have on this is the limitation of the size of the lot. We understand you're trying to restrict certain businesses from starting up, and there is others empty out. Where we're on less than an acre, our concern is if we were to have an opportunity to say, to sell the property to, oh, let's say a convenience store, gas station type thing, where they want an acre or less like that, we'd be prevented. That was our only concern. Other than that, we're good with the whole, the whole change. It doesn't really affect us as our grandfather did.
Do we have, do we have, what would be the restriction for him on that under the new?
Thanks, sir. So that's a pretty specific question to a specific property, which I haven't heard of a question or the situation before. So what I'm going to do is turn that question over to Mr. Pastor Eric Watson, who probably has some information on it.
Okay, thank you.
So there is a new ordinance, a minimum lot size of three acres, and that would really be intent there is to prevent further subdividing properties. And if properties are already less than three acres, then that property can be sold in its configuration where it's less than three acres. It just prevents further subdividing for partials that's under three acres.
And if he was to sell it at that one acre or slightly more than an acre, it would, the business that would come in would need to comply with the new R, the new, what is it, LI zone?
Would need to comply with the, if it's a different use. So if Mr. Mulholland were to sell this property to the same, the same type of use that's there now, that's allowable. If it's for a new use, that new use would need to comply with the design. But again, in terms of the lot size, because it's an existing lot, if you were to sell it even for a different use, because it's an existing lot, it can continue in its current configuration.
So if it would be a convenience store, would that be something that would be allowed?
Yes.
Okay.
I'm good, thank you.
Is there anybody else here to speak to this issue? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing, and we'll bring it back to the council for discussion. Discussion or a motion?
Mayor Pro Tem, I would move for approval of ordinance 16-32.
Second, I'm sorry.
Sorry. I just want to note that I did have questions in the study session concerning, you know, being able to continue the same use on the same property and was reassured that that would be able to happen. So I'm confident that this will be a good ordinance for this area.
Okay, we have a motion, and I believe Councilman Hune seconded that motion. So any discussion or to the motion or all in favor, oh, roll call.
Councilman Nordfeld?
Yes.
Councilman Hune?
Yes.
Councilman Lang?
Yes.
And Mayor Pro Tem Vincent?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
We have a few resolutions on our agenda, and I'll turn the time over to city manager to go over number eight.
Thank you, sir. So this resolution would authorize an interlocal agreement between Salt Lake County and ourselves, West Valley City, to provide brick and mortar construction funding for a project at the Utah Cultural Celebration Center. The amount of that agreement would provide for $2,564,000 to assist in completing that project. In return for that, we would be responsible for some matching funds within a particular timeframe over those requirements here real quickly. So we would be responsible for a 50% match over a 10-year period was the original agreement. Under this agreement, we're actually allotted more like 11 here to be due by the end of 2016, 2017 fiscal year. We also have to complete the project by December 31st, 2018, apply naturally to all the accounting requirements that would be proper, and add that normal clause in there before we pay the bill for 2019. I guess I could also note, sir, that this project has been discussed from its construction and design standpoint over time to this day and age. So this is a real project. We have a design in place, and an architect that has assisted with that design, and we're ready to move forward with the project if the council is approving.
Okay, is there any questions of the staff on this resolution? And we can have a motion.
I approve Resolution 16-109.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. We'll take a roll call vote.
Councilman Lang?
Yes.
Councilman Hune?
Yes.
Councilman Nordfeld?
Yes.
And Mayor Pro Tem Vincent?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
Our second application here, well, this is an agreement with Best Friends, and I'll turn the time over to Mr. Pyle.
Thank you, sir. So Best Friends Animal Society and the city have entered into an agreement over a few years to partner up in services that Best Friends provides in addition to what the shelter services are with the goal of achieving a no-kill community status. We have achieved that, and in the interest of maintaining that no-kill status, this addendum allows us to move forward and continue those relationships with partners that are in that program right now. Those include an adoption program, a community cat program, kitten nursery, and pet adoption center, and other various efforts that we've accomplished with them and other partners.
Thank you. Are any comments from the council? Okay, we're ready for a motion minute.
Mayor Pro Tem, I would move for approval of Resolution 16-110.
We have a motion, do we have a second? Second. We have a motion and a second. I just might want to add that our partnership with Best Friends has been one of the key issues in allowing us to be a no-kill. issues in allowing us to be a no-kill shelter, which has been greatly received by the public. And so, it's been a great partnership. Have a roll call vote.
Councilman Nordfeld?
Yes.
Councilman Hune?
Yes.
Councilman Ling?
Yes.
And Mayor Proten Vincent?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
Our third resolution here is for some auditing services to look at our books and make sure we're doing things properly. Let's turn the time over to Mr. Pyle.
Thank you, sir. So yes, this would be our annual agreement with an auditing firm to provide that required and of course desirable audit service on an annual basis as required by state law. This would be in the amount of $76,384, and it would be a continuation of the service provided as by Kettington and Christianson CPAs, who did the audit last year and the year previous.
Do we, do we put this out with an RFP to get different opportunities to different accounting firms?
We have not made the choice to do that in any recent years, although we have done that in the past. And the reason, the reason for that is basically a priority question. The priority question is this: is it desirable to change your auditing firms from time to time, but there's an actual operational reason to keep them around for a long period of time? And that, well, first is cost. It's cheaper to keep auditing firms around longer as they get the chance to get used to the city and know what the costs are associated with performing that audit. It's also desirable to keep auditing firms around for a good, long time, just because as they are more familiar with your city and they develop at least a cooperative relationship with the city, they're able, they're more familiar with the operations, and therefore they're able to look into those operations more readily. Now, that might not seem to make sense on the surface of it. You might think it would be more desirable to have a different auditing firm every year so that there are no, you know, close relationships built up with them, that sort of thing. I mention that because it's desirable to point out the fact that an auditing firm actually works for the elected body of the city as opposed to the staff that operate the city. In our case, myself and the staff under me. So those auditing staff that work for Kettington and Jensen, I'm sorry, Kettington Christianson, it used to be Jensen Kettington, are actually working through an audit committee and wishing two elected officials to report back to you and re-coordinating kinds of issues or findings. And in addition to that, actually, requests on annual basis, are there areas that you would, as a group specifically, like them to look at as part of, which helps them maintain that arms-length distance relationship? Having said all that, it probably will come a time where it is desirable to go out and issue an RFP and then deliver to county, or I'm sorry, auditing services, but we didn't recommend that this year.
Thank you. Any questions on the staff this time? Is it they do once a year or?
Yes, sir. Once a year.
Okay, we can pass for a motion.
Mayor Proten, I move that we approve resolution 16-111.
We have a motion and a second. We have a roll call vote.
Councilman Ling?
Yes.
Councilman Hune?
Aye.
Councilman Nordfeld?
Yes.
And Mayor Proten Vincent?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
Is there any need for an executive session?
No, sir.
We have one more motion.
Motion to adjourn.
We have a motion to adjourn. We adjourn. We do have one more meeting that follows here that will take place, so we'll turn the time over to the housing authority.
Thank you. I count over the housing authority. We've had an opening ceremony that four members are present, including Mayor Bigelow, Councilman Bueller, and Councilman Christian. We have two resolutions, and so, Mr. Pyle, will you introduce that first resolution, please?
Yes, sir. Thank you. The first resolution is a request to purchase a property located at 3027 to 3029 West Lehman Avenue in the city for a purchase price of $235,000.
Thank you. Any questions or is there a motion?
Move for approval of resolution 1606.
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion for this resolution? All right, we'll turn to our recorder for a roll call vote.
Ms. Ling?
Yes.
Mr. Hune?
Yes.
Mr. Vincent?
Yes.
And Chairman Nordfeld?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. Our next resolution, 16-07, is to amend the bylaws of the housing authority and to amend our meeting schedule. This is an update of our bylaws, so it fits the state code and fits the practices we've already enacted in our meetings. So anything that you'd like to add, Mr. Pyle?
No, sir. That covers it, and it's worked great. Thank you. All right, so a motion or a discussion?
Mr. Chair, I move to approve 16-07.
Second.
Thank you. A motion and a second. Any moving else? Turn to our recorder for a vote.
Mr. Vincent?
Yes.
Mr. Hune?
Yes.
Ms. Ling?
Yes.
And Chairman Nordfeld?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
That concludes our business, so we need one more motion.
Motion to adjourn.
Thank you for the motion. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned.